I am calling back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Item 4.1 Broadcast Statement, which will be read by our Student Board Member Nguyen.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;C U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, April 22 at 9:00 a.m., Monday, April 23 at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrokable.tv. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Nguyen. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by the West Campus High School Band, the girls' basketball, the boys' basketball, and the boys' soccer team. We'll also get a presentation and special recognition by Board Member Minnick. We can call you up? Which is two-thirds of the audience. Everybody, come on, we're all friends. Do we want to have one or two of our students come up to the microphone to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
If you're tall, you can adjust it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You can stay up here. Please, please, everyone stay up here. We're going to get... Please, remain for a moment. We're going to have an opportunity now to recognize your tremendous achievements. Your Board Member, Board Member Michael Minnick, is going to have a special ceremony and certificate presentation.
Thank you, President Ryan. I am excited to be here at Warriors Night at the Board Meeting. Very cool. All right, so as President Ryan said, we are acknowledging girls' basketball, boys' basketball, boys' soccer, and band for some amazing accomplishments this year. It's been exciting for me this year to witness all this stuff in action. I was not at every game and every band concert, but I did get to see everybody in action at some point this year, so this is very exciting. So let's first talk about the girls' basketball team. So we're proud of everything our girls' basketball team has accomplished. Not only have they been successful on the court, they've been as successful in the classroom holding a 3.7 team grade point average.
Wow.
They truly represent the phrase "student athletes." They are truly a model for all student athletes. This year's team went on to win the Division IV Section Championships. CIF moved them to Division III. Again, this team persevered, winning the Division III NorCal Championships, and ultimately the Division III State Championships, which was awesome. That was a pretty big blowout, too. There have only been a small number of teams that have won back-to-back state championships in a higher division the following year. So, awesome. Great job, girls' basketball. Awesome. All right, let's talk about boys' soccer. So last season, our boys' soccer team played 26 of their 29 games on the road. They had to practice on tennis courts, in the cafeteria, at parks and schools, indoor soccer facility. This year, the playing field has been leveled, both figuratively and literally, by the new field that was built, that they have now opportunity to have that home-field advantage. West Campus has accounted for seven of the district's eight total soccer sectional titles, and this is our district's first-ever back-to-back sectional title winner for boys' soccer and the first Northern California Regional State Championship. Feel free to yell out if I get any of these statistics wrong. All right. So, all right, now I want to talk about the band. So...
Yay!
All right, there we go. Along with student athletes, West Campus is home to many student musicians as well. Outside of their academics, the band and color guard dedicate their time in developing their skills on their instrument and multiple styles of music. There's a marching band, concert band, pep band. We see the band out there at the games. I know that there's an awesome rock band that I've heard playing Rush during the games. I thought that was pretty awesome. It was a personal favorite. They're out there at parades. I hear the drum line and stuff. I can hear them from my house a few blocks away, which is awesome. Sometimes I sit out in the backyard and listen to the drum line. They're out there, and there's all these opportunities for students to perform at community events. So for the past season, we want to recognize the success of the winner drum line. The winner drum line won the Northern California Band Association Championships in 2015, 2016, second place in 2017, and won first place in the Advanced Percussion for the 2018 Championships on April 7. I have a special fondness for the percussion. I was a percussion player in high school as well. All right, and... Sorry, I always have to make it about myself, don't I? All right. The last group here. Let's talk about boys' basketball. So, West Campus have knocked on the section championships door for some time now, and finally nabbed the Division IV banner with a 67-60 victory over Placer High on March 2nd.
Yay!
It was not easy, reaching a 25-8 overall and a 9-3 in the Golden Empire League. There were a lot of roadblocks and growing up that needed to be done. Against Weston Ranch in late February, the Warriors were down by 15 in the fourth quarter before taking a 63-60 victory.
Whoa, whoa.
Man, that was a comeback. West Campus also displayed tenacity in coming back from a double-digit deficit in the previous game. The 2017-18 season was simply a success, as for the West Campus Warriors family, from our parents and family support, the student body support, the staff and administrative support, and the hard work our student athletes put in to make this season memorable. So let's hear it for the boys' basketball. All right, I'll wrap up now. So these student athletes and student musicians have made the school, our families, our community, our city proud. We are so excited to have them with us, and they have left a legacy that will last forever. And with that, I have some acknowledgement certificates. I want to come down and give these out... Well, they're not... I don't have like 500 of them, but I have one for each of the teams and the band, and I'm going to ask Member Nguyen, who is also a Warrior, to come down and join me.
Wait, wait, wait. You're talking about...
No way.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
That way, Dara will...
All right, girl.
Girls' basketball.
Yes.
Okay, let's get a picture there.
Your board is a nice suit, too.
I know.
All right, band.
Okay, so we're going to do a picture, so we're going to have to face this way.
I will, I'll tag you.
One, two, three.
What's up here?
Hey, cheese.
I hope you think they are...
You'll use your outfit.
Time for that?
I already did it.
Moving on to item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
May, Madam President.
Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption.
I move to adopt.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
If I can please ask everyone in the room to lower their voices and take the conversation outside as we're continuing with the agenda. Once again, congratulations, we're so proud of your achievements. Item 7.0, Special Presentations. Item 7.1, Approved Resolution Number 3004 in Recognition of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Board Member Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. I won't read all the wherashes, but I will read a couple pertinent ones. Whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have made indelible contributions to the history of our city, region, state, and nation that include but are not limited to building the transcontinental railroad, serving honorably in the armed forces, and co-organizing the Delano grape strike. And, whereas the Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have endured hardships, including unjust working conditions, prejudice, and discrimination in some of the darkest times in our state's and nation's history, including the Chinese Exclusion Act, naturalized citizenship inability, ineligible ability, anti-masengination laws, and Japanese internment. And whereas Asians and Pacific Islander Americans constitute 18% of the district's student population, now therefore be it resolved that Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education does hereby recognize May 2018 as Asian Pacific American Month, and calls for educators and students and the community to reflect upon the important contributions made by the Asian Pacific American community. I will be delivering this to the Organization of Chinese Americans at their annual Dragon Boat Festival on May 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Wu. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
And second.
Second. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 7.2, Approved Resolution Number 3005 in Recognition of Earth Day, which will be presented by Board Member Cochran.
So this resolution also has many wherashes, seven, and I'm going to whittle it down to two comments. Whereas being good stewards of the environment has become a universally held belief by the Sacramento City School District community, and our district works to promote programs and partnerships, district ride, in an effort to educate students and the community about environmental causes. Here are some individual schools that support the district's work. Rosemont and Sutter have school garden events. McClatchy has an Echo Club that will host activities. Einstein has an Earth Day parent involvement. Alice Burney, Earth Day Neighborhood Pancake Breakfast, and McClasky Adult Center, Earth Day Scavenger Hunt. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education does hereby recognize April 22, 2018, as Earth Day, and supports the important work and services provided by the Sacramento City Unified School District partners and schools. I move to approve this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Student preferential vote?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion carries. Thank you, Board Member Cochran. Item 8.0, Public Comment.
We have 17 public comments. If you could line up when you hear your name, please.
If you can hold for one second, Mr. Barrios. If you can please keep your comments to two minutes each, we want to be mindful of your time and allow for all of the comments to also make their voices heard.
Okay. The order is Jennifer Kennedy, followed by Jean Chasko, Laura Tepley, Thomas George, David Fisher, Zoe Sutherland, I apologize, Grace Trujillo, Angie Sutherland, Jessica Taverra Valines, Benita Ayala, Renee Webster-Hawkins, Kristen Van Der Louis, Kenya Martinez, Sarah Inman, or Calviere Desi, Angel Garcia, and Maria Ramirez. Thank you, go ahead.
No, no, don't worry about it.
I'm a parent of a fifth grader at David Lubin Elementary School. I'd like to speak to you today about the dangerous state of our severely neglected playground asphalt. It's crumbling and slippery with loose gravel, cracks, and potholes that have been causing injuries for students falling, sliding, or tripping while running and playing on its surface. The most recent injuries include skinned knees, chins, and twisted ankles during recess, lunch, PE, and even during our Girls on the Run group. It's an after-school group focusing on increasing confidence and self-awareness in girls through fitness due to this dangerous uneven surface. Several of our students use assistive devices for ambulation and have had trouble accessing their playground, as have our parents and staff with mobility issues, who need to be extra careful walking across this treacherous playground area. A work order was put in last October, but there has been no response. Our playground has not been resurfaced in almost two decades and takes the brunt of 600 students pounding across it daily. These same students also have the right to be able to access it, a safe place to play, run, and practice games and sports without the fear of painful injuries because of severely neglected asphalt. We need to have this playground area resurfaced in a prompt manner so that we may prevent further serious injuries from occurring. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
President Ryan?
Board Member Cochran.
Thank you, very briefly, because I know we have a lot to go through. At the last parent-teacher group meeting that I attended, which was a few weeks ago, this was addressed. It is in the queue, and Principal Dixon sees it as a high priority. Here's my card. With this and any other issue that comes up, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cochran. Go ahead, come on. Jeanie Chasko and I are together. Hello, my name is Laura Tepley. Jeanie Chasko and I are here to ask for your support in maintaining our job share position. This job share position has been at Hubert Bancroft since 2004 and is now being arbitrarily denied after 14 years. Please support teaching excellence by keeping my job share position with Mrs. Chasko. It began with the birth of my first of four children. Knowing the importance of parental involvement in a child's education, this let me balance work and family. I had been blessed to maintain a career while staying an involved mom at my children's schools. All four principals before Mrs. Creo supported me as a professional woman and a devoted parent, but Principal Creo arrived at Bancroft with an irrational opposition to job share, saying it was not in the best interest of the school without one valid reason. We even presented a stack of letters of enthusiastic parental support and requests to be in our class. Creo simply ignored the Bancroft community. We won our jobs last year through grievance but are back to square one. Where is the support for women and family rights if you force women to choose between career and family? We presented evidence of support while Ms. Creo offered only her single-sentence opinion, not one concrete fact to support her decision. Of course, principals have the right to decide personnel decisions, but those decisions should not be based on opinion or bias. Her denial is a personal attack on two very hard-working teachers. Mrs. Chasko and I share 45 years in the Bancroft community together, and we hold the best interests of Bancroft here. We teach the core subjects plus visual and performing arts and music. As the superintendent and school board have stated, these subjects should be taught in every classroom. Supporting our job share proves that you stand behind your word. You are getting a very enriched class in Room 11 at Bancroft, and for quite a deal. Even our colleagues at Bancroft and throughout the district gladly entrust us with their own children. If I am forced to work full-time, I will not only lose time with my children, this will increase your expense. For a district operating at a deficit, supporting our job share makes fiscal sense while still providing the enrichment to our students at no extra cost. Our superintendent also outlined the need to expand on enrichment classes like the arts, but states that we cannot afford it. Guess what? Supporting our job share keeps the arts and music in at least one classroom while it saves the district money. Denying our job share is a blatant step backward for women's rights, parents in the workplace, and ignores the Bancroft community. It will cost you more salary while losing Jeanie's lifelong musical expertise. Please consider our job share packet with an open mind. If you believe that your support or lack of support will not affect your constituents, you are incorrect. The community of Bancroft is vast. Women, moms, parents are all watching carefully to see how you treat your employees who request to balance work and family. We have earned the right to job share that we have worked so hard to make successful and desirable. Thank you for your time. Thank you. So you did go over... Were you combining your time between the two of you? So we have about a minute left for the second commenter.
Okay. Superintendent Aguilar and honored board members, my name is Jeanie Chasko, and I'm privileged to job share a second-grade class at Hubert Bancroft with Laura Tepley. I'm grateful to have worked at Bancroft the last 10 years, after being a volunteer there for the previous 21. Since joining the staff at Bancroft, I've taught piano lab, ELD, and resource, and enjoyed a second-grade job share for the past three years. It has been my great privilege to teach at the school where I made so many memories and friends within our College Glen community. Bancroft is literally the hub of our neighborhood. At the 50th anniversary celebration of our school last year, we were able to bring in every living former principal and many retired teachers and alumni families. Our Bancroft community commonly sees third- and fourth-generation students. I love teaching at Bancroft and will lose my job if our job share is not approved. We coordinate our lesson plans every day, and we get along well. In conclusion, to preserve teaching excellence, support family values, women's rights, and fiscal responsibility, please consider our job share. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Hello, my name is Thomas George. I'm a sophomore at West Campus High School, and our soccer team, and our basketball teams, and our band was just here. Thank you for honoring them. I have been on the JV soccer team for the last two years, but in addition to that, I'm also involved in debate, robotics, and Mesa, the last of which I'm here to talk about. My request is simple: Don't defund Mesa. My school has a tight operating budget, and it relies heavily on district funding for Mesa. In fact, I was talking to the Mesa advisor today. She's here in the audience, thank you, for our plan, and we need... We're dependent on district funding. My teammates and I recently competed at UC Davis, and Kennedy, McClatchy, Sutter, and Cal were there, too, and SCUST largely swept the field. And while the teams from other schools... Unlike the teams from other schools, my team was composed primarily of students for whom private school was not an option, and the diversity of West's team brings honor to SCUST, but the district's plan to delink the funding and push it to the schools will have a disproportionate effect on schools like West Campus, so I'm asking you to please reconsider.
Thank you, we appreciate your time tonight. David?
Good evening. David Fisher, President of Sacramento City Teachers Association. It's hard to believe that we're kind of getting to the home stretch, and there's only 10 weeks of school left. There continue to be a number of positive steps in our work with the district. We are fortunate to begin moving towards the implementation on our agreed-upon restructured salary schedule. We've been waiting for some time, some of the schedule placement issues to be resolved to determine the effective date of the new schedule to fall within the annualized 3.5% cost for 2018-19. We hope to complete that work this spring so that we can be best positioned to recruit highly qualified, certificated educators who reflect the diversity of our district. On a related note, we've received some very good news from the California Education Coalition for Healthcare Reform, or CHECKER. Our work with CHECKER has already resulted in significant savings to the district on health insurance. While the district's budgeted for a 6% increase in health insurance for 1819, the Kaiser rates actually dropped, and the Health Net rates rose by only 4%. So overall, the district's health insurance cost rose by only 2%, resulting in a savings of approximately $4 to $6 million, or enough to add between 40 to 75 certificated teachers. We look forward to working with the district on how to best apply those savings, and the potentially larger savings, if we can negotiate a successful transition to Calpers, for example. Finally, we are pleased that the district has dropped its bogus investigation of the five strong teacher and student advocates for alleged participation in a student-led walkout protesting the McClatchy administration. Administrative issues at McClatchy continue, with teachers taking the extraordinary step of holding a secret ballot vote of no confidence in the CKM administration. Despite unlawful surveillance and attempts to intimidate voters by CKM administrators, teachers gave the administration an 86% vote of no confidence. We also have recently presented evidence to the district of the CKM administrators making false, misleading, and contradictory statements in a targeted effort to silence educators acting in their role as teachers and student advocates. It's also important to note that these same false and misleading statements that we just provided the evidence for form the basis for a reckless attack on SCTA leadership by representative from UPE, who then proceeded to defame SCTA.
David, if you can please wrap up your remarks. We have many more speakers.
Last sentence. We have reiterated our request from the district to take appropriate action to intervene at CKM to address these longstanding issues before and already volatile situations continue to escalate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zoe. I'm in the sixth grade. I've been bullied since the fifth grade in this school district. Most kids found it fun to bully and harass me because of my disability, my parents, my interests, and the way I am. None of the schools I went to accepted me for who I am and did not stop the bullying. When I would tell a teacher what happened in the fifth grade, the principal would accuse me of being untruthful, and the kids would lie to cover up what they did. I was called words like stupid, loser, ugly, retarded, diseased, albino, cloudface, mental monkey, pimple face, and faggot. Kids would say mean things to me like, "Go run to your aide," "Hey, you should have never been born," "Kill yourself," and other hurtful things. Kids also liked to exclude me from group activities and... group activities and had made fun of me for going to OT. It made me feel depressed and scared to go to school. The way I was treated made me feel suicidal. My parents reported all of these incidents, but the bullying kept happening. I was also beat up. The boy said, "Why is this retard playing with us?" And then he beat me and two other girls up. I'm in a private school now. My mom said, she told you at the last meeting, how much I love the new school, and it's true. I get treated like any preteen should be, and I feel like I belong. All of my, I have lots of friends and they are nice to me. I hope that this district does something to start protecting children because now I've been treated badly at four different schools. I also have friends who have been bullied because of their disability, their race, and their gender status, and I'm worried about children who are not getting help and who are depressed and feeling suicidal. I want to help other kids. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Zoe. You're a very brave little girl.
Good evenings, members of the board. We allow Zoe to speak first so we can let you know a story, why Angie came and spoke in our last meeting. But I think it was very difficult for Angie's son to speak. And these are just some examples. My boy is not able to come and advocate. That's why I'm the voice for him. Among all my friends who are advocates, who have worked many, many, many years, to speak, not for their own children, but for all of you out there in the audience, even for the people that are in this room that sometimes don't speak because of their jobs, of their connection, or sometimes because they're embarrassed because their child has a disability. And for also the people in the audience that are listening, please stand up. What we're about to explain in a letter of the things that we've gone through these past couple of years, we're a voice. This is our union. For kids with disability, we don't have a voice. We all spoke about having our kids in private schools. I found out it's cheaper to have a child in private schools nowadays. The cost, you know, going to St. Mary's is $5,000. The district gets $10. You know, these are just some examples. There was bullying in my school. They brought the FBI and brain counselors to talk to the parents and the students. It was addressed right away. We need to work together in a culture. Right now, you're going to hear what our union is for our kids. These women have worked tirelessly, many hours. We had a juge right now of parents picking kids up, getting hired someone to be in lookout for our children so we could be in this meeting. So further ado, Angie's going to speak first.
Can we reset the clock for Ms. Sutherland? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Angie Sutherland, and I'm here with all the parents of students with disabilities tonight that work with our CAC, and regretfully, we are here to announce the resignation of Special Education Community Advisory Committee officers and members in protest. It is with rising passion and moral imperative that we collectively announce the resignation of the following officers and voting members of the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, effective immediately. California Education Code Part 30, Chapter 2, Article 7, 56190 requires each special education local plan area, SELPA, to establish a community advisory committee for special education. The Education Code and the SCUSD CAC bylaws specify the responsibilities of the CAC. Among other things, the Board of Education and the SELPA Director are required to review and consider the CAC's advice on the development and amendment of the local plan and to collaboratively work with the CAC in the planning of annual special education priorities. The preparation and implementation of the district's Local Control Accountability Plan requires collaboration and engagement with the CAC as a stakeholder to ensure that the educational needs of students with disabilities are included in the LCAP. These and other parent engagement requirements depend on an active and representative CAC. The undersigned officers and members are resigning due to repeated actions and inactions by the Board Superintendent and SELPA Director over the past few years, all of which make abundantly clear to us that students with disabilities are not valued in the district nor are deemed worthy of investment.
Hello, Board. My name is Jessica Taverelines, and I hold the secretary position for CAC. For many years, these officers and members have volunteered countless hours to help students with disabilities and their families understand the rights to a free and appropriate education and to access and progress towards career and college goals. Still, these students are underserved or have made little progress and are regressed academically and even, or were even harmed physically and emotionally at school. Students with disabilities have the lowest graduation rate of any subgroup in the district. Only 57% graduated in June of 2017. At that rate, and that rate is declining significantly over the prior years. It's also significantly lower than the statewide graduation rate of 65%, which has been climbing the past three years. A universal complaint expressed by parents and some professionals to members of the CSC is that children with learning disabilities in the CSUSD district are simply not served. These students are labeled as having attention or behavior problems or just simply labeled lazy. The district takes the wait-and-fail approach and does not evaluate for possible learning disorders, which could by all means be remedied if they're detected early. With students who are significantly behind in grade level in reading, the district fails to provide evidence-based intervention with fidelity or special education services because the district has failed to provide its general education teachers or reading specialists or any training and methodologies that actually work. One nationally respected educational psychologist calls SCUSD's approach to students with learning disabilities "educational malpractice." Hmm. Wow. Okay. With learning disabilities impacting potentially one in five of our students, the district's failure to provide evidence-based instruction to students with reading disorders is the primary cause of the students' prison-to-pipeline.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening, President, members of the board. I'm Renee Webster-Hawkins. I'm the Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee on Student Outcomes for the CAC. I'm a mom of two kids, one of whom Jeremy is with us tonight. To continue, the district's expenditure on a $2.5 million program that you're going to be hearing about later tonight, which forces struggling students to go to summer school just to rehash curriculum which didn't work in the first place, is punitive on the children. A visionary academic director would invest those funds in professional development for hundreds and hundreds of teachers at all levels, from kindergarten through 12th grade, to learn and teach structured literacy and multisensory math curriculum which, if delivered explicitly and with fidelity, can more effectively remediate struggling students within the academic year. Despite the fact that federal law requires students with disabilities to be taught in the least restrictive environment, this district continues to add segregated classrooms. In 1993, this district so very badly wanted to segregate a kindergartner with cognitive disabilities from her friends that the district sued a local, wonderful family all the way to the United States Supreme Court and lost. The Rachel H. case is now the law of the land, giving students the right to be taught alongside their typically developing peers. And yet, Sacramento City Unified School District continues to defy federal law and Rachel H. in complete disregard for students' rights. In addition to adding segregated classrooms, in recent years, the district has chosen to staff these segregated classrooms with uncredentialed teachers hired en masse from overseas markets. There is no transparency as to the quality of instruction or evidence-based curriculum being offered in these classrooms and whether the services are individualized as required by federal law.
Thank you, Renee.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Van Der Sluus, and I am a parent of two children. I've got a first-grade son at Caleb Greenwood Elementary and a fourth-grade daughter who, unfortunately, we had to pull from the district and place her unilaterally at a private school because of the district's refusal to address her learning disabilities and many other challenges as well. I am a participant with the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, and I'm here to continue reading our letter. We just heard that there are federal laws that are not being followed, and what's disappointing is there is no evidence of academic achievement for these disabled students. For three years, the CAC has reported to the board that the district spends over 10% of its annual special education budget busing students with disabilities around town to these segregated classrooms outside their neighborhood area. With visionary leadership, the $10 million per year could support highly qualified teachers to create enriching co-teaching teams in inclusive practices settings. But the district has done nothing to reprogram these expenditures to benefit students with disabilities so that they can progress academically and graduate. Despite a detailed audit documenting the depth and breadth of the failure to provide appropriate special education services in May of 2017, the district has failed to implement or even report out on any meaningful plans for changes in the SELPA and special education leadership or capacity of schools to correct the grave deficiencies. Key failures include the fact that students with disabilities in SCUSD suffer unacceptably poor graduation rates, are suspended at a disproportionately higher rate, are unlawfully deprived of meaningful and timely transition services, fail to receive appropriately educationally-related mental health services, leading to disproportionate number of students identified with emotional disturbances.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Kenya Martinez. I am the mother of two children, currently attending Sac City Unified School District. I'm going to read from where we dropped off. An insipid dropout of special education services at an alarming rate between 11th and 12th grade, suffer racial disparity through significantly disproportionate over- and under identification, and are more likely to be identified with an intellectual disability if they are an English-language learner. The May 2017 audit also detailed significant disconnects and deficiencies in the district's organizational capacity and leadership, including a site-based theory of change, which gives autonomy to school sites and creates inequities in special education services from campus to campus depending on each principal's discretion and commitment to fully serve students with disabilities. Following the May 2017 audit, the CAC asked the board for three things. One, a board-level special education committee to oversee the district's plan and progress to address the grave deficiencies in the audit. Two, to follow the audit team's recommendation to reorganize the special education division and hire a proven expert to take the reins and turn around the outcomes for students with disabilities. And three, to establish a strategic plan to implement the audit's recommendations. One year later, none of these things have happened. In the fall of 2017, the CAC hosted a roundtable discussion with board members and staff to receive a report on the progress made to implement the May 2017 audit education audit recommendations. Staff reported that staff in the general education and special education divisions in headquarters had moved their desks closer together. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Sarah Inman, and I am a member-at-large. In November 2017, the district was identified by the California Center for Educational Excellence as the eighth-worst performing district out of over 1,000 districts in California, largely because of its failures to provide appropriate education to students with disabilities and is subject to mandatory remedial intervention. The district's special education program is currently being audited by the California Department of Education through both a comprehensive evaluation as well as a disproportionality review investigating data pointing to racial inequity among the classification of students identified with emotional and intellectual disabilities. The CAC has routinely asked the special education director for updates on the district's plans and efforts to address findings from these audits and investigations and has received no information. The CAC is under the belief that the district is subject to a performance indicator review plan overseen by the CDE requiring the demonstration of milestones to improve graduation rates and decrease the number of students in segregated classrooms. However, the staff refuses to acknowledge or share the district's participation or progress under this plan. The district's safe haven school district resolution, which created a safe environment for all students, failed to include students with disabilities. The district's graduation task forces failed to articulate a program or pathway to ensure that the highest number of students with disabilities can graduate high school and have the widest array of post-secondary options. The district has announced eliminating the American Sign Language Program at Hiram Johnson, depriving students with hearing impairments, and also eliminating an important pathway for students with other disabilities of satisfying the A-G, A3G foreign language requirements for college entrance. Despite jargon about giving all students equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options, clearly, all does not mean all to the district. The jargon rings hollow. Thank you.
Former Vice President Benita Ayala is in the rear of the room, providing care for her son and has asked me to serve as her proxy. In spring 2017, the LCAP Planning Committee wholly failed to consult with the CAC for advice about increasing outcomes and engagements by students with disabilities and their parents, even though it's required by law. For years, the CAC has brought specific evidence of bullying and harassment by students and teachers against students targeted because of their disabilities, and yet, the bullying and harassment continues unabated. For years, the CAC has asked for transparency and accountability regarding the contracting with outside providers for services including educational and applied behavioral therapy, due to the widespread experience by parents that these outside providers often do not have the expertise or oversight to ensure quality support for children. However, these concerns have fallen on deaf ears. The special education director has refused to collaborate with the CAC on the creation of a strategic plan to implement the findings and recommendations from the May 2017 audit. The board has failed to designate a special education committee to oversee the implementation of the recommendations from the May 2017 audit, and the board, superintendent, and administration have failed time and time again to include express consideration of students with disabilities in the initiatives and other executive decisions. Thank you.
My name's Angel Garcia. I'm the current vice chair of the Community Advisory Committee. Despite working collaboratively with the district, four of the executive CAC members had to pull their children out of public schools and place them in private schools where they are excelling academically and in a safe learning environment. The culture within SCUSD does not authentically support or believe in students with disabilities. Very few teachers know what the Fair Act is or include lessons on contributions of people with disabilities. Too often, students who have been bullied are blamed for the bullying or held responsible for stopping it. The illegal Appendix D, which existed in the district's contract with the teachers for over 20 years, cultivated a culture and where teachers believed that they can pick and choose whether or not to have students with disabilities in their class. Ever since it fought Rachel H.'s family, the district has been a place where students with disabilities are made to believe that they are a burden and somehow present a danger to the right of non-disabled children to the very best education. Sometimes people call it encroachment. This culture must change, starting at the top. Each of you knows the signatories of this letter and have witnessed the patience, collaboration, leadership, and good faith we have brought to this critical endeavor for many years, many forums, many challenges and trying events. many forums, many challenges and trying events. However, these are civil rights which are being denied to over 6,000 students in the district every year. We can no longer be complicit within an organization who has demonstrated repeatedly that is either uninterested or incapable of serving students with disabilities. With resounding dignity, full-throated equity, and uproarious faith in their ability to succeed beyond our wildest dreams and hope. With regret, Angela Sutherland, Angel Garcia, Benita Ayala, Grace Trujillo, Jessica Taveras Velinas, Calvir Desi, Katie Connor, Kenya Martinez, Kristin Van Der Slus, Renee Webster-Hopkins, and Sarah Inman.
Does that conclude the comments from the CAC? Before we take our next public comment, I did want to say a couple of things in response. I have had the opportunity to sit with several of you in tears. I've been in tears myself as you've struggled to try and navigate the system and advocate on behalf of your children. I know what that's like. I'm experiencing some of those same challenges myself currently. I will tell you, I acknowledge the brokenness of our abilities to serve special education students at the level we need to. And beyond that, each of our board members are currently acknowledging those deficiencies, having meetings on our special education services and practices so that we better understand both what is being done today, what has been tried, and where we are going moving forward based upon the audit. I can tell you, and I don't want to speak for my other board members, but when we had the audit, we were happy to lean into the criticism because we thought that that would serve as a mandate for change. Part of what we've requested as a board is that in May, we have a presentation on our special education work, the changes that have been made, and what we're continuing to do to address the deficiencies. I know that that is woefully insufficient to parents who feel that their children are being failed today. Just know that I hear your voices, I appreciate your advocacy, and as a parent who struggles with many of the same challenges, I also truly and deeply understand your pain.
Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar and board members. My name is Moises Olivares, MOOC Center interpreter. I will interpret Maria Ramirez's comment.
Buenas noches, Superintendent Jorge Aguilar and members of la junta.
Good evening, Superintendent Jorge Aguilar and board members.
Mi nombre es Maria Ramirez.
My name is Maria Ramirez.
Vengo de la escuela Goodbye.
I come from Goodbye Elementary.
La razón que estoy aquí es porque hay una persona que trabaja en la oficina y habla español-inglés.
The reason I'm here is because there is a staff member working in the front office. She's a bilingual staff member who speaks English and Spanish.
Ella nos ayuda a llenar papeles, nos manda los mensajes de lo que tenemos que saber de la escuela en español.
She assists parents of the school to translate documents that we need to send to school.
Y la razón es que nosotros queremos que ella se quede ahí porque es muy importante para los padres latinos que estamos ahí y ella nos ayuda en todo lo que puede.
I'm requesting the board, I'm requesting the district to keep the staff member in her actual position because it's very helpful for the community of Goodbye.
En estas cartas traigo el sentir de los padres que van a batallar si ella no está ahí en ese puesto.
And this is, these are the letters that parents of Goodbye wrote, letting the district know that how they're going to be affected if this staff member leaves her position.
Les agradezco por escucharme, gracias.
Thank you for listening to my comment.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
End of public comments.
President Ryan?
Yes, Board Member Cochran.
The documents on the podium need to be turned over to...
Oh, okay. Nathaniel, can you get those for the board members? Thank you. Item 9.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. 9.1 Sacramento City Unified School District's Expanded Learning Summer Programs Update. Good evening, Dr. Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. My name is Iris Taylor. I'm the chief academic officer, and tonight I'm joined by Vincent Harris, our Chief Continuous Improvement and Accountability Officer, Matt Turkey, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and Kelly Odiwo, our Coordinator State and Federal Programs. And we are here tonight to share with you the plans and the work that has been underway to design SAC City's Expanded Learning Summer Program. So this initiative is really one that I think you will see exemplifies this core value in action. It is being strategically designed to get at and to address some of the major inequities that are in the system, specifically around our students' academic performance. It's really designed to address the needs of our students who are exhibiting that they are off-track or who are not on-track for grade level readiness in a few key curricular This is quite an undertaking. This is the first time, I think since I've been in the district, that we've had an academic-focused program that is system-wide. And as you can see from this slide, there are several key people, key departments, that have been working over the past few months to bring this program together. And you can see, I believe, that almost if not all departments within the organization are outlined on this slide. And I just want to pause for a minute to thank those who have been working on this, some that you see here today, the chief members that are around the room, as well as other faculty that are in the audience. Now, you've seen this visual before, and this slide represents what we call the four tenants. Anytime you are trying to implement an initiative such as the summer Expanded Learning Summer Program, these four areas, so these four tenants are at play. Oftentimes, though, what you see is that the program primarily focuses on the red, the logistics and operations, and to a certain degree, the purple, the curriculum and instruction. Sometimes there's not much attention paid to supervision and evaluation, and if at all, professional learning may or may not occur. But what you'll see in our, the Expanded Learning Summer Program that you'll hear about tonight, is that there's been a deliberate design in which these four tenants come into and interact with one another. You'll see a relationship between the logistics and operations, the supervision and evaluation, with a clear plan on how principals and our principal supervisors will work together to ensure that the program is carried out, that teachers are receiving support, that the programs are being monitored, that data is being analyzed over the course of a very short period of time, over the course of the six weeks of the summer program. A clear intention around curriculum and instruction to address students' misconceptions in mathematics, to address foundational reading skills, where students, what we know based on the research are areas and reasons why students may not be on-track for grade level So we've shared with you this quote from Marcus Breton, and this was from an op-ed, I believe, back in February, that was grounded, that stemmed from a recent controversy within the district around the Science Fair project at McClatchy, right? Which we have kind of grounded as, it's not about the Science Fair project, but it's really about a pipeline issue, right? Having students who are eligible for our specialty programs. And what Mr. Breton said was that he, being superintendent, really hopes that our parents will ask how to have more real-time information, information that will help them understand how their students are progressing through the system. What the summer program is designed to do is, it will be kind of the launching point or the starting point of what we hope to build out and we want to build out as a parent portal, or a parent dashboard, so to speak, that will allow parents to see, one, how are these students doing in summer? How are they doing? And how does that summer program impact their performance over the course of the school year? So what we'll share with you tonight is just a sample. This is what we would call a mock-up of a parent prototype, a parent portal prototype that we want to institutionalize in the district that will help parents understand how their students are progressing. Thinking of summer, summer learning program as just an expansion of the general school year. School doesn't stop in June, it continues throughout the summer, and then it picks up in the fall. So here you'll see a sample of a student, John Doe. And this particular John Doe, showing that this student is significantly on-track or on-track for grade level readiness. That portal would then have a visual representation to show where John is, if he's significantly on-track, you know, some sort of dashboard, blue indicator that he is significantly on-track for grade level. Similar to the California dashboard, maybe a pie or something that shows he's fully there. Then, again, a student who is significantly off-grade level, similarly, we would have a way of showing where that student is. And then, as they progress over the course of the school year, is that dial moving to the left? Okay, to the far right, I'm sorry, which is where we would want all of our students to be. Again, a parent being able to see this and see where their student is at any point in time, including via the summer. Matt Turkey's going to share with you a little bit about how we're identifying students and what these levels would mean in the context of summer as well as in the context of the school year.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the board. Once again, in February, Marcus Breton, as part of that article, mentioned that the district is failing the vast majority of students who are not qualified for HISP by the time they reach ninth grade. They aren't qualified because they haven't been prepared from kindergarten through eighth grade. So here he's really talking about grade level readiness and the pipeline issue that we have within the district of keeping our students' grade level ready. So when we think about grade level readiness, we really need to think, how are we going to be able to track that? We need a method of tracking grade level readiness, which means we need descriptors for each of those levels, which Dr. Taylor took us through just a few minutes ago. Over on the very right-hand side, the Level 5, we're calling significantly on-track, on-grade level. Significantly off-track would be Level 1, in the red, then moving up through Levels 2, 3, and 4. So, let's take an example. We have a student here, and the way which we're looking at the different grade level descriptors is through a combination of a grades and Sback results. When you put those two things together for this student here, we can see that this student is significantly off-grade level, and hence, this could well be one of the students who we are targeting for our Expanded Learning Summer Program. So now we're going to have a look at the pipeline and what this looks like. And we're going to compare disproportionality within our district for African-American students and white students. What you're seeing on this screen, first of all, is our kindergarten students, for African-American and white, the red being the significantly off-grade level, the pink being not on-grade level, the yellow being nearly on-grade level, all the way up to the blue, which is significantly on-grade level. So let's see how that progresses. As you can see, for both, the pink and the red is increasing, okay? So here we see the pipeline shrinking. As it goes on through the grade levels, again, you can see the red increasing and that pipeline shrinking, and you can see the disproportionality in between our African-American students and our white students here, which is happening. Now I'm going to take a closer look at the pipeline issue which we have. So if we're looking here at kindergarten, have a look at the red and the pink. It takes us just above 10%, okay? So it's saying that just above 10% of students are either significantly off-grade level or not on-grade level. And then we come all the way over to 10th grade, and that red and pink has increased up to almost 80%. We're saying almost 80% of our students are either significantly not on-grade level or not on-grade level. You can also see the blue and the green, it kind of shows up as a kind of a strange yellow there, okay? In the way that that's also decreasing over time. Now, I know that there's kind of the ups and downs, but overall, if you take it, you can see a visual of the pipeline there and how it decreases. So here's some of the research around, okay, well, yeah, what does the research say? Well, the research points to several important kind of grade levels. One of the things which is really pointed out is reading by third grade. Another thing here which is pointed out is around making sure that the ABCs, the attendance, behavior, and course performance, okay, are all in line. If you're missing in any one of the ABCs, then you're more likely to be deficient, you're more likely to drop out. So let's have a look at the grade levels which we're targeting. We're looking at, first of all, our current kindergartens and our current second-grade students. The reason which we're targeting these students is the reading by third grade. If you take a look at where they are at the moment, the red and the pink, we're looking at significantly off-grade level and the off-grade level. The aim here is to take those students and move them up, okay? So that then by the end of the summer program, by the start of the school year, these students are much, much closer to being on-grade level and have a much better chance of then going to be on-grade level during the school year. Other students which we're targeting are our incoming sixth-grade students. Take a look here at the jump from sixth grade to seventh and eighth grade in the red and the pink. That transition grade from sixth to seventh grade is an at-risk grade level. You can see there where those jump, okay? So we think, okay, well, how do we mitigate that? We mitigate that by intervening during the summer with our Expanded Learning Summer Program. Again, with the aim so that the red and the pink there, okay, we move those students up to be closer to grade levels, so when they start seventh grade, they start middle school, they're far more likely to be successful. The next group of students we're looking at is our current eighth-grade students. Again, if you look at the red and the pink throughout high school, 9, 10, 11, and 12, we can see how those grow. Our eighth transitioning into ninth grade is another at-risk grade level. And again, it's where we're intervening here, with the aim that the red and the pink, those students, can move up so they're closer to being on-grade level as they start the school year. That's the whole aim. Another group of students who we're targeting here are our current sixth and seventh-grade students. So if you think back to the Marcus Breton, the article there, when he's talking about the students who are eligible to apply for the criterion-based programs, and he talks about the pipeline, and he talks that, well, it would be easy, he says, much easier to get those 50 kids to apply who are eligible than it would to grow the eligibility pool. As we know, the eligibility pool actually shrinks over time. As we know, the eligibility pool actually shrinks over time, so we have to try and protect the eligibility pool. So that's what's happening with this group of students with the aim of keeping them significantly on track so we can protect that pool of students who can then apply to those criterion-based programs at high school. The other students we're targeting are our current high school students who are between five and 10 credits behind either for A through G or graduation. The aim here is to increase graduation rates and increase A through G rates. Another group of students which we're targeting here is our current high school students who are already on track and we're giving them some enrichment opportunities on an opt-in basis rather than opt-out basis, so that they can opt-in, so that they can stay in that green and in the blue, and again, so they're on-grade level and they'll be able to apply to the most places that they possibly can. Okay, so this slide is all about what do the numbers look like, okay? So if we take our kinder, second, and sixth grade students, we're looking at serving our significantly off-grade level and our not-on-grade level students. Eighth grade, we're looking at serving our significantly off-grade level students. For a total for this group of students of just over 1,000, 1,150. For credit recovery, we're looking at 2,062 students across our high schools. For the enrichment portion for middle school, 520 students, 521. High school, 600, with a grand total of over 4,000 students, 4,333. So as Dr. Taylor said before, it's a pretty big undertaking, moving from serving around 400 students maybe last year to around 4,300 this year. Okay, so at this moment, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly O'Deppo to tell you some more details about the summer program.
Good evening Superintendent, board members. In partnership with the Communications Office, we will be communicating with parents through various methods about the ELSP program. This slide shows you an example of one of six letters according to the students' grade levels that will be sent out to parents of those targeted students. We will be sending these letters out in two ways. One is a backpack method and also through US mail. There will also be various methods of advertising the summer learning program. And we will be advertising on the district website, through social media platforms, in the Infinite Campus Parent Portal, and also on e-connections. Parents of targeted students will also receive phone calls home as well, informing them of the program and when it starts. Because this is an opt-out program, in addition to the parent letter, parents will also receive an opt-out form. In order to disenroll their students, parents will be asked to fill out this form and return it to their child's school. All of the opt-out reasons will be tracked in Infinite Campus and included in our process or a cycle of continuous improvement. For ease of use, we have created potential opt-out reasons and placed them in Infinite Campus for staff to easily track why parents choose to disenroll their students. Also, all of the letters and opt-out forms will be translated for our parents. So we have seven ELSP programs that are all aligned to our four priority elements, which are third grade readiness, middle school readiness, high school readiness, graduation, A through G rates. For our incoming first and third grade students who are significantly off-grade level or not on grade level, they will engage in theme-based literacy activities that focus on developing their foundational reading skills, their grade level reading skills, as well as writing skills. In addition to this program, students will be engaging in Summer Quest as well to create a well-rounded program that's both fun, rigorous, academically rigorous, and engaging for those students. In addition to reading, our third grade students will also participate in math instruction to help develop those math skills that they need to work on to prepare them for their third grade year in the fall. Our program for incoming seventh grade students who are significantly off-grade level or not on grade level, and our ninth, incoming ninth graders who are significantly off-grade level, is designed to integrate with our Summer of Service program to provide students with units of study that strengthen their skills in English Language Arts, specifically in argumentative writing, and to engage in skills that are, that will develop their academic skills as well as their success in career and beyond. These students will also engage in math instruction that will help develop their skills in math and fill any, in any gaps that needed, that will be needed. Our middle school enrichment program for incoming seventh and eighth grade students who are significantly on-grade level is designed to enrich and extend their argumentative writing skills through social justice-themed interdisciplinary units. As a result of this program, students will, will build their writing skills and academic strategies to support them in advanced learning opportunities. The purpose of this program is to protect and grow our pool of students who are eligible for criterion-based high school programs. Our credit recovery program is for our current ninth through 12th grade students who are between five to 10 credits away from being on track for A through G or graduation. Students who participate in our credit recovery program will either engage in online credit recovery or in-person credit recovery. And lastly, our original credit enrichment program for high school students will provide students with original credit, A through G courses. And those, those courses are for students who are at least on grade level for A through G and graduation. This program is a blended learning program that's offered through UC Scout. So on this slide, you'll see a flyer that has been developed to advertise, to further advertise the summer program. You'll see that for our elementary and middle school programs, we will begin on June 18th and end on July 26th. It is a Monday through Thursday program, beginning at 8:00 AM each day and ending at 2:00 PM. And for our high school program, we will begin as well on June 18th and end on July 19th from 8:00 to 2:00 PM. However, our credit recovery program will go a little bit longer from 8:00 to 3:00. We also have additional summer programming offered for students who are not targeted by the ELSP program. And those are Summer Quest, Summer of Service, Summer Matters, Summer at City Hall, and also other extended school years. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Dr. Taylor.
So just a little bit about the professional learning. I spoke earlier about the, the four tenants coming together and professional learning being one of those areas that, that may be underlooked, I would say, within programs such as this. But for our summer program, we are designing it so that teachers will receive professional learning around the curricular areas of focus prior to the school year, the summer program beginning, as well as during the summer program. Teachers will be supported by our curriculum coaches, so receiving ongoing in-class instructional coaches that is job embedded. The professional learning will center around the curricular areas, the use of pre-assessment and post-assessment data, using data to inform instruction, formative assessment practices so that they're assessing students on an ongoing basis, and then that effective use of their daily collaborative time. The supervision and evaluation of the summer program is really centered around the work of our instructional assistant superintendents, working with our principals to help them use this time to hone their skills in building a data-driven culture. We see the summer, summer program as a way for, for staff who are interested in, in the leadership, such as our assistant principals, potentially learning the skills of effective leadership as a component of, of being the principal in the summer learning program. So the, the work will center around supervising and how do you support teachers in effective instruction? How do you support teachers in engaging in data analysis and assessing, assessing and monitoring and student progress? Matt will share with you the host sites and how they were selected.
Okay, good evening again. So in terms of the selection criteria of the host sites, we went through a process, first of all, of working with our facilities to eliminate any sites which were for any summer construction and hence would be closed. After that, we clustered schools together by proximity and numbers of students. And then, within each cluster, we chose a school with the largest population of targeted students as the host site. And then, we made sure that the centrality of the host site was taken into consideration. Here, we have a map of our elementary host sites. There are 13 elementary host sites for the Expanded Learning Summer Program. There are eight middle school host sites for the Expanded Learning Summer Program. And there are five of the large high schools as the high school host sites for the Expanded Learning Summer Program. I will now hand over to Vincent Harris.
Good evening Board President Ryan, Board Member Superintendent Aguilar. It's my pleasure tonight, actually, to, to build on what Dr. Taylor opened with in terms of this is really an opportunity for us to see real-life case study of how we apply the equity access social justice theory of change in our work. And so one piece of the, of the dense graphic that Dr. Taylor spoke to has the cyclical continuous improvement wrapped around it. And that's really an opportunity for us to apply this as well in terms of building it into a actual case study, if you will. And so, we're going to talk about some of the improvement aims of our summer school Expanded Learning Summer Program and really frame it around the notion of us actually learning more as well. And so, for example, as you think about the description of the various levels, one through five, we're going to look at, you know, movement of students. And so, you can see the baseline here for our second graders who are going into the third grade. This is the number that basically are at level three. And so, as we think about the notion of moving students from significantly off-track and from not on-grade level, we actually have done some projections to really, to some degree, set up improvement aims or targets, if you will. And so this first example is if we move every single student who is significantly off-track or not on-grade level, you can see we'll move almost 300 students in terms of our rising second graders in the third grade, really speaking to the, the power of managing that transition really effectively. And then we did other scenarios with that in terms of, let's say, we move 75%, 50%, and then 25%. From a continuous improvement perspective, that whole range matters because obviously our aspiration and all the hard work of our, of our employees have been around trying to get to that 100%, but we also recognize that in reality, we may land somewhere potentially near the 25%. Not, of course, that's not the target we, we want to set, but as we think about the notion of continuous improvement and think about this notion of failure as a treasure, it's really building our own system capacity so that we can have real conversations about how did the program go? What were the opportunities for us that we provide for our students and, and be thoughtful as we reflect on our results, which we'll of course bring back to you in the fall. We did subsequent improvement aim work, also looking at our rising kindergartner students going into first grade and then also rising sixth graders in the seventh grade, wrapped around the very same theme around this notion of what does 100% movement mean? And then also doing the full range of 75%, 50%, and then 25%, all building our own cycle of continuous improvement, building our own internal capacity to look at the data in, in terms of seeing the system and being comfortable with having impactful conversations about the results. And as we think about the overall summer school program, Dr. Taylor and I will take you through some of the impact measures, if you will, articulated measures of success that we have for the program that, that cover a range of, of outcomes.
So the first one really connects back to that dashboard, that parent portal that I shared with you earlier. And it's around the students who show increased performance in the summer program. How many of them maintain that performance during this, throughout, during the, the fall? So we'll check back in and see, are they still on, or have they maintained their status? The second one is looking at our 12th grade students and to see how many of those who were in credit recovery within that five to 10 credit deficiency, how many of them actually graduated? And then, the third student outcome is around our high school students. How many of them become A through G on track as a result of the work in credit recovery during the summer program?
The final two measures really provide perspectives on, on, again, seeing the system. And so they're labeled under the Logistics and Operations Tenet. And then so that one measure there, the number of students who opted out of ELSP, is actually a really important one because, as you know, we are pre-scheduling and pre-registering students for the Expanded Learning Summer Program. But we also know that there will be choices that families may make about not participating. And so we're looking to really understand cases in which students opt out because that will inform our decision-making for next year. Because potentially what, depending on what the reasons are, and we've, we've brainstormed about 10 to 15, and we know there may be others outside of that, we could actually inform our planning for next year so that hopefully we can find ways to mitigate some of the reasons that students may need to opt out. Valid reasons, and there may be things that we just don't know right now, but we hope to, to use that information to inform our practice going forward. And then, of course, the, the final measure gives it the notion of our own kind of system accountability in terms of making sure we have positions filled by June 1st, recognizing that obviously, we've talked about the research basis for student success, we also know system success, there's lots of research about the importance of hiring early and ensuring that you're fully staffed appropriately as you approach any kind of semester start. And we want to apply that same thinking to summer school as well. Expanded Learning Summer Program as well, excuse me.
So our next steps, and we'll be fast-tracking our next steps, is, as Kelly mentioned, some of the communication strategy. So to launch our communication strategy, to begin to inform our, our families about their students' participation in the program. Again, there are hosted vacancies that we'll need to post, certificated vacancies, classified vacancies, principal vacancies, so posting all of those positions. Scheduling the professional learning, we have dates that are set aside, but just, again, getting the word out and finalizing the plans around the professional learning as well as the curriculum. And then confirming students with the school sites, seeing which students are opting out and trying to, you know, again, pull additional students in. And then absolutely reporting on what is the impact of this, this initiative in the fall of the upcoming school year, once the data is all in. We didn't mention, we're really planning on pre- and post-testing the students who participate in the program so we have some clear and hard data on how our students perform as a result of the program. With that, we'll take questions, our public comment, and then questions.
Thank you. Mr. Barrios, do we have public comment?
We have two public comments.
Oh, before we, before we end, we actually, we have a, a video that we've created that just advertises the program. And so we're going to go ahead and pull that up and just share that with you. We're really excited about this.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. There we go.
The summer school program would help the students because they are going to get extra time, they're going to be able to avoid the summer gap where they lose a lot of information. Being able to have them work over the summer and be able to not only not lose the learning they've done, but actually have more learning would be really beneficial to those students because then they won't be falling even further behind.
We want to start an Expanded Summer Program. We want to move away from the idea that summer school was somehow something that our students didn't want to do to something that we think is going to be rich and provide students the opportunity to increase their academic skills and their academic knowledge. And that is something that I think is going to yield very positive dividends for our students throughout Sac City Unified.
So having it within the district is nice because it's going to be free. And that's a huge thing. I know when my mom put me in summer school, she was like, "Yeah, it was free daycare, it's the best." And my sister was a struggling reader. My sister was at grade level when she started the year, every year, and she wasn't behind grade level because she had that opportunity for summer school.
Summer school is important to schools and the district because students fall behind and they need a way to remedy that. Without it, it's like they get one strike and they're out, you know, and that's really sad.
In the past, I think, summer opportunities required that a parent advocate and see if...
In the past, I think, summer opportunities required that a parent advocate and seek those opportunities. In this case, when we do the identification of students, it'll be because those are the students that we think would benefit the most from this program. We are really hoping that students, as a result of the program, will start their school year close to being on-track for grade-level readiness, or that they will start their school year on-grade level. We want to make sure all students are on-grade level throughout the K-12 experience that they have in SAC City. Our primary goal is to make sure our students stay there. What we've seen is that students transition from kindergarten to first, second to third, and so forth. There's a decrease in the number of students who remain on-grade level. It's one of the reasons why approximately one in five students didn't graduate from our schools. It's also why about two out of five graduates met the A to G requirements necessary to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices. We think that one way to combat this trend is by giving students an opportunity to get closer to grade-level readiness through our Expanded Summer Learning Program.
A lot of kids get Fs or Ds, and summer school allows them to bring those grades up. And I think that's a motivating factor for a lot of kids, because for years, they didn't have that option. And I think it really affected whether kids would go to college or the kids would graduate.
Well, I'm very excited about the Expanded Summer Learning Program. I know that it's something different, something new for SAC City, but I just don't think that we can go wrong in starting to create a culture where our district is saying to our community, "We know that there's needs, and here's one way that we're planning to fill that need." We want to serve the students. We have a Board of Education that is committed to it. It will cost some of our resources, but we think that this is a very wise investment.
The school district and the teachers aren't doing it just because we like telling you what to do. We're doing it because we, just like you, want what's best for your child. And why not put them in summer school and give them the best opportunity that they can get?
Thank you. So, with that, we'll take public comment.
Liz Guillen, followed by Karen Swett.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board. I'm Liz Guillen with Public Advocates, and also a community stakeholder. This sounds very exciting. And kudos to the presentation. I think it does a really great, the presentation did a really great job of modeling what I know many of us in the community and on advisory committees in past years were really hungering for, in terms of information. How are you going to do this? What is it going to look like? Obviously, with more information, there's always more questions, and I have a lot of questions. But I was really pleased to see that some of the key elements of this program are already part of things that have been in the LCAP for some time. And so, it will be really important to see how they are the same or different. The fact that they're at a different time of year suggests that they're different. And the information about the need to hire a whole new cadre of people suggests that there's different people, you know, different staff involved. So, it just seems like a lot of things to know about. And I know folks that are working on the LCAP will want to know, how does it relate to what we have been doing? What can we stop doing now that we're doing this? Will those resources be freed up? And how can we use the information from the success or lessons learned from this program to improve what we're planning on? So, I want to say, "Great." And I want to encourage everybody who is involved in providing advice to the district to get to know what this program is about. And I look forward to hearing more about it, especially around the hiring and development of staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guillen.
Good evening, Karen Swett. And kudos to everybody involved in this. This is absolutely super exciting, and it is 99% perfect. I ran the Extended Learning Program at McClatchy when I was a teacher there. I had at-risk students, and I also had a few students who were in the program. It was after school, not, of course, during the summer. The kids who needed to be there didn't show up. So, my question is, when you're taking attendance, one day of absence, who's going to go after that kid right away? Two days of absence in a row, who's going to get in their car and go pick up that kid? I didn't have any resources for doing any of that. In fact, I would go to my administration at McClatchy and to my counselors the day the kid was absent, the kids who needed the credit recovery, and said, "They're not coming to class." Nothing was done. And I had, you know, I tried to do my phone calls. All teachers try to do some calling when their kids aren't showing up. I had one student I never got around to a phone call. Hemma Godina and I went to his funeral. You've got to do something when they don't show up to class. When their seat, when their butt is not in the seat, it's not going to do them any good. So, something needs, the outreach for getting them there when they're absent. And the kids who were there for the enrichment, they showed up every day. They boosted their credits. The kids who needed the class didn't show up. So, just one more little thing. How are you going to keep them in their seats?
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take questions and comments from board members. Board Member Minnick.
Thank you, President Ryan. And thank you for putting all this information together and for, you know, building this essentially from scratch. I know this has been a lot of work, and I really appreciate it. I just had a couple, what I guess are logistical questions. And it's sort of related to Ms. Swett's comment around attendance. And I'm just imagining, as we, you know, are creating this for the first time this year, there are potentially families that have scheduled, planned, you know, vacations, activities, whatever. If we identify students that are in need of, to be part of the Expanded Learning, but have existing things scheduled, is there any sort of kind of extra leeway that we're allowing for, you know, planned, so they can still, so they don't have to opt out and miss out if they're going to be gone? Like, a week of attendance could be a big deal in a short program like this, but I'd hate for them to miss out entirely. So, that's kind of my first question. And I'll wait on my other ones, if there's some answer to that first.
That's a little tricky. I'll just be, had not thought about, you know, like, a student who can't complete the entire program. So, you know, it's something that we'll have to wrestle with. Honestly, I don't have a, like, yes or no answer for you at this time. You know, there's pros and cons to both. Like, a student who could potentially benefit for the entire program could be sitting in that seat. So, we'll have to wrestle with that. That's a great question. Thank you.
And then, in a related question to that, you know, we're identifying students that are in need of this Expanded Learning in this opt-out-only kind of situation. Is there going to be some sort of option for students or families that want to opt in, as maybe silly as that might sound to a student, to want to opt in to summer school, summer learning? You know, are there going to be, is there going to be space and allotment for students or families that want to self-select into it?
So, the entire, you know, what we're projecting in terms of the numbers of students that we're served, we're able to serve is really, we're bounded by budget, right? You know, we have X amount of seats, X amount of teachers. And so, you know, we want to first, absolutely, serve that demographic of students that has been identified for the program, recognizing that it's insufficient. There are many students who could potentially benefit from a program like this, but we're, you know, there's a limited number. Our capacity is limited in this instance. That said, I want to cycle back to your earlier question. Just, you know, this is a program, as Vincent said, as Ms. Harris said, you know, that we are, we're looking at and want to improve on over time. And so, you know, we'll be constantly assessing. We haven't launched this yet, and there's still time and space within our planning to think through some of the very questions that you're asking in terms of the student who can only participate for a certain portion, or the student who wants to attend, who may not have been in that pool. But we definitely want to serve that pool first. Yeah, sure.
Hi, just to speak to your opt-in question as well. So, one of the advantages is that we have been collaborating with the Expanded Learning Department around Summer of Service and Summer Quest. Okay, so, students and families can absolutely opt into those programs, and they go for the exact same hours. They actually blend the students together at certain points, okay? And then, the students who are targeted get pulled out for kind of these, kind of special, kind of classes with credential teachers, right? But there's absolutely, there's options for families to opt into.
And then, one last logistical question, because obviously, you know, we have limited resources, so we have limited, you know, site options. You know, a lot of families have, you know, chosen the elementary school they go to or middle school they go to, based on what's walking distance to their house. And so, in this situation, when they're, they might, you know, be identified to participate in this, but the nearest site is not, you know, close enough for them, do we have any thoughts around transportation? And I know that's another expense. And then, how that factors into, you know, potentially, we could have a lot of families saying they want to opt out, because they just can't get their kids there. So, I wanted to see if, how you might be addressing that issue.
I'll take a stab at it. You know, in trying to determine where the sites were located, you know, one of the factors that we did try to look at was the distance. And if you recall the maps that Matt showed, we recognized that there's some areas in the district where they're, because as we pull the data, the number of students coming from those areas are smaller. And so, we were trying to make calls about, you know, some sites have very small programs. And so, you know, transportation is not factored into this for this year's programming. But it's, again, it's something that we'll need to look at as we see, you know, what are the reasons that parents are saying that they are opting out? And then, do we need to put in, do we run a smaller program, provide transportation? Or do we allocate additional funding so that we can provide transportation? It's, you know, they're just decisions that we'll have to make as a system.
So, in this first year, kind of as a pilot, we'll be seeing what those reasons are. And if those reasons are transportation, then that might adjust how we do things in 2019. Okay, great. Thanks.
Do we have other questions or comments from board members? Board Member Hanson.
Mine, I'm not really sure how to put this in the form of a question, but the chart, I'm sorry, there's not a number on the page, but it's the chart with, it shows the dropout rates for sixth graders, early indication warning, seemed to be about the 15th, 20th page. It was titled, "Substantial Numbers of Future Dropouts Can Be Identified in As Early as Sixth Grade."
This one right here.
Yeah. There you go. There's a part of this graph that I've seen many times and read about, and I know all of us probably are aware of it. But you look at what's happening from ninth grade to 10th grade, that huge precipitous drop that happens there. And a lot of belief among educators that transitional periods for students, when they transition from one school to another, is a time that really affects dropout. And obviously, you know, we have some kids that are going from ninth to 10th grade, or, you know, that have just gotten into ninth grade from eighth grade. Are we looking at that in particular of, you know, the transition periods and things that we might be able to do to try to lessen the impact of that really precipitous drop that happens at that point in time?
We can, we can talk to you.
Okay, sure.
Yes, that's exactly some of the reasons why we're designing the program as we are, to address the transition point. So, having those sixth graders transitioning into seventh graders and having something for them. One thing that we didn't speak about is that, as a part of the programming in the middle school space, there'll be a component that talks about, like, that transitioning from sixth grade. Sixth grade is different from seventh grade. Now, you were in one class, now you're going to transition to multiple classes. How do you plan and manage your time around that? And then, similarly, transitioning from eighth grade into ninth grade, a core component of the curriculum is just understanding, you've gone from middle school, where there's no, you know, no credits, right? Now, all of a sudden, you're going to have to earn credits towards graduation. So, building that as a part of the curriculum is what we're designing for in the summer school space.
Board Member Cochran.
Thank you for your hard work on this, and it's very exciting. I have several questions, and they're kind of all over the place. Can you pick up the slide that shows the high schools where the program will be offered? Back one, I think. No, that's right. So, the east area includes Kit Carson, which is, you know, seventh through 12 now. And would it be possible to give an opportunity for the east area to have a class like this at Kit Carson? And if it doesn't fill up, then you wouldn't actually pursue it for the high school students?
So, if I can talk about how this is organized for a second, right? And so, we have, obviously, we have five large high schools. The reason West Campus is on here is because Hiram Johnson is having work during the summertime. And so, Hiram Johnson is being hosted at West Campus. It's really Hiram Johnson's Summer School, Expanded Learning Summer Program. And each of the small schools, as we have, we have several small schools, okay? So, we have Health Professions, we have School of Engineering and Sciences, we have the Met, we have New Tech, we have Kit Carson, we have George Washington Carver. So, we actually have six of those small high schools with kind of, you know, similar numbers in those high school spaces. Each of those high schools are funneling into the, into the large high schools, which are near them, okay? So, the students from Kit Carson, for example, would be traveling over to West Campus. And yes, it would be possible, of course, to run those at the small high schools as well. As we run more programs, the cost obviously increases, and it's that choice around, okay, well, do we decrease the number of students who we're serving and have more sites? Or do we increase the number of sites and increase the cost?
Okay. I ask because you are projecting to have the middle school summer program there, so that's why I asked about it. So, thank you. If you could go to the slide that shows the seven ELSPA, E L S P? So, I'd like to know if you've identified the reading intervention for first grade? What program?
We, so, if you'll remember, at the, I think it was the last board meeting, we adopted the new ELA curriculum called Benchmark for K through six. We're actually going to be using those Benchmark materials, and we will be training teachers on how to use those materials for both the incoming first and the incoming third.
So, a first-grade student would be reviewing the first-grade material of Benchmark, or? Okay.
So, the incoming first grade, it's actually the current kindergarteners. So, they would actually be looking at the kindergarten material. And we're kind of, it's, we're in an advantageous time, because obviously, they've not seen the kindergarten Benchmark materials before.
Okay. And the teachers that are teaching the interventions, are there fully credential teachers?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to ask a question. We have a Partner Visions 2000, which employs instructional aides who are district employees. Are they going to be considered as one of the programs that students can apply to?
Could you repeat the last part of your question?
Sorry, my voice is a little out. Sorry, my voice is a little out. Are they going to be considered as a program that students can apply to?
Yes, and so we, we listed several programs that are coexisting, um, summer programs that are coexisting, and that is one, um, as well as Freedom Schools, um, and, and other programs within, that are happening during the summer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have other questions from board members at this time? Board member Vang?
So first, I just want to thank all of you for all your hard work. This is super exciting and I think we all know that our students have a lot of needs. And I know if we move forward with this, it's going to be a really wise investment. I have just a few comments and questions regarding around the staff, the hiring of staff. And I think, uh, member Cochran have asked if they were going to be credentialed, but I wanted to know what happens if, um, one, the first question is how many staff are we planning to hire? And what happens if we don't meet those numbers? Does that mean that we're going to cram students in the summer together? And so if you can speak a little bit about that? I'll wait for you to answer that and I'll go to the next one.
So, um, yes, you know, we're, we're looking and working, um, with our, our, our labor partners around the hiring of staff. And, you know, that question did come up around particularly certificated staff and what if there aren't enough teachers who want to do this? And do we then open it up to teachers outside of the district potentially to come and work with our students during the summer? And so we'll have to look, um, we absolutely don't want to, you know, like, this is a very, um, vulnerable population of students and we recognize that. The class sizes are smaller, um, in the, in the summer learning program. And so we want to maintain that. We recognize, recognize that that's important. And so, um, want to consider other options and work with them to determine what other options might be.
And then the other question is more, more for clarification, Matt. I think you had a mention, and maybe I've heard this wrong, but that students were going to get pulled out, that you guys were collaborating with the summer, the summer programs, um, and that students were going to get pulled out. Is that students being pulled out of other program like Freedom School or are these, no, these are, so could you explain a little bit more about that?
Yeah, of course. Okay, so the programs kind of, they, they kind of sit on top of each other like this, right? So if you imagine, let's just take a school and, uh, school X, right? And in school X, there are a hundred students which have been identified in first and third grade, okay? And then let's say there's a hundred spots also in Summer Quest, that adds up to 200 students, right? So all of those students come, they have breakfast together, okay? And after having breakfast together, then the students who were identified for the ELSP, okay, will then be going into programs with credential teachers and getting very, uh, particular curriculum, okay? But then the students also get together during the afternoon, all students together, right? And then they'll be going through whatever, you know, different activities which they'll be going through, um, as part of Summer Quest.
Okay, that's, that's cool, because I, I, because I think a big part of this, I don't want students to, I think the fact that they're going to be together in the morning and the afternoon is like critical, because we don't want students to feel like, why am I different from these students? Why am I in this, in this program? Um, the other, so I, my, my last question was regarding the co-location of programs, but I think listening to your rationale and what's going to happen to overlap, it sounds like we'll definitely be having multiple summers program at, out of sight. Um, so that's, that sounds great. Those were the only questions I've asked. Thanks.
Thank you, board member Vang. Um, do we have any other questions from our student board member? No? Okay, so I'm going to jump in and have a, uh, ask a couple of questions as well. You know, I want to begin by thanking you. I understand that this is an incredibly ambitious undertaking, I think to say the least, and that with, uh, less than, uh, well, about two and a half months out, there is a lot of work to be done to see this vision into fruition. Um, this is exciting to me on multiple levels. I will tell you, as someone who spent my career in education policy, you know, the research around, uh, ensuring that students are on grade level as a means for lifetime success is staggering and troubling also as a parent in terms of recognizing what happens when we fail to ensure that our students are at grade level. So that focus to me is key, and I think the areas that you're looking with the grades that you're targeting, um, and the student populations that you're seeking to pilot the program make a lot of sense. In an ideal environment, I think we would be able to serve 100% of students who have need in our high poverty, high potential district. And we can't do that right now, but I think what we have to do is use this year as a learning opportunity so that we can shape our efforts moving forward. I appreciate that Expanded Summer Learning seems to be a key intervention in high performing urban school districts. And so the fact that we are delving into this, um, at this moment in time is, uh, really a testament to the leadership of the superintendent and the team that has embraced this. I absolutely know that irrespective of how much goodwill there is or spirit of moving this forward, unless we identify the best possible teachers, this will not make a difference in the lives of our students. And so I am very interested and I would like to hear a bit more about the identification, hiring and training of those teachers, because at the end of the day, I want the teachers in our district to feel like this is an opportunity to have impact with the student population that they've desperately needed additional time to serve.
So the, the identification of the teachers is, is, again, it's something that we are in conversations with our collective partners around. Um, we, we know that we have some, um, we, we want teachers who are, one, experienced with serving the population that we're, we're, um, we're serving, right? As I said earlier, these are students who, um, who are, who are underperforming, they're, they're not on grade level. And so we want to, you know, work with them to design a way of how do we identify those teachers who have that experience? With the professional learning, we want to, um, we're planning, again, that professional learning before they, they engage with students, to focus not just on the curriculum, but also what are the instructional practices that support students who are behind and who are not on grade level? So it's curriculum and instruction. But recognizing one, that one or two sessions of professional learning before program starts is insufficient.
Absolutely.
Okay, so teachers really will need to have that coaching and support. We have a cadre of district training specialists who work with teachers, this is what they do during the school year, um, who, you know, will, will work side by side with those teachers to help them, coach them, demo lessons, um, co-teach with them during the summer program as well. So we're really designing a professional learning model that, um, because it's a smaller than, you know, during the school year, it's a very targeted grade levels or targeted grade levels that we're focused on, we feel that we can do some, some deeper work around supporting teachers with this.
I'm definitely interested in hearing and learning more about what that deeper level work looks like in supporting the teachers, given the fact that we're trying to launch this, um, 10 weeks from now. I, I also want to ask, um, you talked about the class size ratio being smaller in the summer program. What does that look like? Lower grades, middle school and high school?
So in the, um, K through three space, so the, uh, incoming K and, sorry, current K and current second, we're looking at a ratio of around 16 to one as a maximum, hopefully being a little bit lower than that. When it goes into our middle school, we're looking at 18 to one as a maximum. And then going into the high school credit recovery, I believe we're looking at, um, 20 to one. And, um, yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So when I look at the map of schools, I am, um, really, uh, stricken by the idea that particularly at the elementary school level, there's a concentration of schools in our highest poverty, most challenged areas, and I appreciate that. I think that that will be important for our families and students being able to come to summer school each and every day. Um, I do just want to underscore what Karen said, and I think you heard some of this from our board members, that outreach is going to be critical to ensuring that we have the students who need this the most showing up to class each and every day. The letter to parents, you know, congratulating them on having an opportunity to serve their child through the Expanded Summer Learning is good, but I would say that that is probably one touch point and multiple touches that will have to occur before a family is saying, this is it, my child is in this school, um, you know, as part of our summer plans. And so I would hope that you're being creative with your strategy, working with our parent empowerment groups, working to do everything from calls to text messages, so that we're hitting at every level the possible mediums that parents are using to get the information. I'm happy to hear that it's going to be culturally and linguistically sensitive, but I do think we might even need a parent worker campaign to be able to get this information out there. And so I would just put that out there. Um, maintaining the status of the students should they make gains, I think is going to also be an intense and important focus. So, you know, I know my daughter, uh, did Freedom Schools two years in a row, incredible program. Her gains in confidence in reading were pretty remarkable. By the end of the summer, coming into the beginning of her next grade level, we saw demonstrable gains. Even the teachers would comment in her after-school program, coming into the next year, that she had made gains over the summer. She has had a very difficult second grade, and so we were one of those families that saw that, you know, slide. And so I guess I'm curious to hear from you, you know, what is the vision for working with the teachers that will receive these students post the Expanded Summer Learning to ensure that they're using these new ways of learning and modalities to serve students well?
So I, I think, um, the teachers who participate in the program, who, um, engage in the professional learning, you know, this is some, an area where we, we need to look at our, our summer strategy and our school year strategy and try to sync them up. And, and by that I mean, you know, like, if I, I mentioned earlier about the coaching and the support, right? Um, I think it'll be important that we look at the supports that our training specialists are providing during the school year and, and so that, you know, they're not supporting maybe a set of teachers in summer and then it's an entirely different set during the school year, which means that we're going to need to make some strategic choices about how we structure our coaching support during the school year. So it's a very, um, very valid point that we'll, we'll need to consider, you know? It's just, it's a, um, logistics, you know, like, so that it's, because we can't serve everybody, right? There's just not enough. Um, so how do we target who's receiving the services? And how do we build in, like we talked about pre-posting and monitoring along the way with our students? How do we also engage in similar practices around that coaching support that's provided to teachers?
And I appreciate it, sounds a bit like you're, you know, building this plane midair, so I understand that. But these are the key considerations, I think, that we'll have to have moving forward. Um, just, you know, a, a couple of final thoughts. I am very aware that parents are often grasping for resources when they have struggling children. I'm experiencing this right now as a parent and as a savvy parent who understands at a higher level how to navigate the system. So for parents who don't have access to people and additional resources, being able to say that we're taking the luck, the guesswork out of having a summer enrichment learning opportunity is huge. So having this opt-out versus opt-in, providing kind of a very simple way to onboard students who would be most at risk of falling behind, I think could be transformative if done well. I will say that my daughter is going to be one of the children who is going to be incoming third grader, second grader right now, who is significantly on track, off track, who will be, um, participating in summer school. I need her to succeed. I need you to ensure that all our kids succeed. But I also have a trade-off, which is I have to choose not to do Freedom Schools this year, which has been, um, such a part of our children's lives for the last couple of years, so that I can ensure that she can take advantage of six weeks of our extended summer learning program. And so, you know, not only will I see firsthand how well it serves her, but I have to tell her, trust me, this is going to be an opportunity for you to learn and grow and this is in your best interest. So, um, you know, I'm very invested in this program's success, and I know that we have thousands of students who are counting on you to be able to answer all of those tough questions we just asked and to ensure that this year is just the beginning of a program that will grow to serve students in the years to come. Thank you. So we're moving on to our next item. That was just an information item, no action at this time. Oh, it looks like we have a, a late additional question or comment from board member Hanson.
It's just a, just a comment and it's not in regards to this, but, um, I thought this was the right place. I had some folks contacted me just during the meeting, uh, that were interested in, you know, my comment and on the comments of, uh, Dave Fisher's, um, remarks, and I thought it was important to address those, so I'm going to do that. Uh, I was sad to hear, but not surprised, um, SCTA leader Dave Fisher denigrating one of our most popular schools, uh, once again putting the priorities of the adults over our students. I look forward to the day, David, where you choose to partner to build up rather than tear down. You could start by investing time supporting and promoting our schools instead of protecting teachers making racist comments right in front of you. The attempt to divert attention from the successes at McClatchy with the gin-deep vote of no confidence is another example of you putting the adults before the students. You well know the vote you claimed, the, the statistics on the vote were not truthful. In fact, many teachers didn't want to participate and never voted. So the, the numbers you gave were not accurate or truthful. And many may wonder once again, why are you targeting a minority in leadership instead of building us all up together?
Board member Hanson, are you done?
Yep.
So I just want to, um, in closing out this item on our Expanded Summer Learning, say that I am hopeful that we are going to lean into this as an opportunity to work together, teachers and administrators and district, to ensure that our students can succeed. I don't want us to lose, um, sight of what we're trying to do, which is ensure that each and every one of our students reach their full potential. And I-
Yeah, so you can, they'll give someone a response, take potshots at somebody and call them racist. I mean, so I-
Gary, can you put, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher, I don't mean to cut you off, but this is a highly unusual circumstance on both sides.
I know, I know, why Mr. Hanson took the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Barron, can you please advise?
Uh, well, there, uh, there was a comment, there were comments by Mr. Fisher. A board member can comment on that comment. Um, if we go back and forth, then we're really getting well beyond, uh, rebuttal, se-rebuttal, it's almost like a trial. So I think there's a disagreement in opinions and I think we should leave it at that.
So, Mr. Fisher-
All right, I would, I assume, I just want to say that I knew he took the opportunity and we knew I couldn't respond, but we had close to 100%. It was 68 to 11. Please just be truthful, trying to do the best for the district. I have kids in the district, we love the district, um, and so, and so, and so it's just really unfortunate you would take those kind of-
What I'm going to say is, I very much always value the opinions of individuals who are expressing the needs of our students in the best interests of our district. I do want to say, let's all be adults here, and I, and I would say that to everyone in the room, we're examples to the students that we serve. And so, um, let's continue to honor process and have these conversations outside. So we're moving on to item 10.0, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, student preferential vote.
I vote yes on all open session items included in the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, student board member Nguyen. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Item 11.0, business and financial information and reports. Receive information, 11.1, business and financial information purchase order receipt, 11.2, Head Start, Early Start, Expansion Report receipt. Item 12.0, future board meeting dates and locations. Our next board meeting will be held on May 3rd at 4:30 PM for closed session 6 PM at the Cerna Center. With that, item 13.0, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.